This time we bring the Stigler Board of Education regular meeting on Monday, November 14, 2022 at 7:00 PM to order. Members present are David, Brett, and Susie. This time we move on to the Pledge of Allegiance as a prayer by Mrs. Valerie Lewis.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Dear precious heavenly Father God, I just thank you for this day, Lord, and I thank you for this school board, God, and I thank you for our family here at Stigler who work together and we love one another. I just thank you for the freedoms that we have and the freedoms that you've given us, Lord. As we go into this meeting, God just help us to remember that our purpose is to do whatever it is that you would have us to do to help children, God. I love you, Lord, and I praise you. Peace is in my prayer. Amen.
Thank you. First quarter student achievement data, I L X, Ms. Rhoda Johnson, Valerie Lewis, and Jessica Morris.
I'd like to say these are some of our mentors in our buildings. We just started this last year. Ms. Rhoda Johnson is the mentor at the elementary school, kind of liaison between the administration and teacher Valerie Lewis at the middle school. And then back in the back, we have Ms. Rita Bussi with kindergarten pre-K, and Jessica Morris at the high school. Jessica's also, she plays a role that meshes with this real well as district testing coordinator. And then this group, but we also have Courtney Henson that does mentor work in the high school. So they've done a great job getting this together. So we're looking forward to seeing our dad.
Okay, well, let's see what's, oh, okay, here we go. Well, so this year, as a district, we have purchased the IXL program. Now, the elementary school used this for several years in the past, just as a supplement. And so I guess a couple of teachers recommended it, and then it kind of went from there. And all I've heard is good things from all the teachers about it. And, but we chose this to help us to fill in the gaps of our learning loss with COVID and any other learning loss that we might face. This particular page is the front page of the book I gave you, and it just shows the skills from elementary, middle, and high, how many skills we have mastered. And this was October 24th when I apprenticed, so I checked again today, and those have all, each one of those levels have raised two to three thousand in number because it's an ongoing progression. So every time they get on IXL and work on a skill, it logs that. So we have hours at school and hours at home, and one of the other ladies will talk about that later. But we don't send our Chromebooks home at elementary school, so they don't get a lot at home unless it's a virtual day where they can log in. There is an app, though, that parents can download. We haven't really advertised that. We probably should advertise that a little better and get that working at home. But, so this is also aligned to our state standards, which is excellent, and any curriculum that we have. I think it's hit most everyone of our, from reading series to math curriculum. So, and you can assign skills. If I wanted to just assign my third graders third grade state standards, I could log in, put them on that learning path, and they could just work through every state standard that we have. So that's one way that a teacher can assign skills. Another way is with my curriculum. We have HMH into reading this year, and that whole reading series is in IXL, so I could go and just put them on that path. This week, we are working on module five, week two, so I could go in every skill that is in our story this week. They could work on every one of those skills if that's the path I chose to put them in. A lot of teachers just go in and assign the skills that they want. So if they want to assign compare and contrast, they will go find that skill, and they get in those students, like what students you want, and those students will go and work on those skills. It has a computer adaptive diagnostic, and that's where this is coming from. It just, that just means, so they log in, we had two diagnostic tests, and we did one in August, and in October, we have another one coming up next month. And so it pinpoints where they're at. So it's adaptive. So if my third grade student is on a little lower level, then it will break those skills down and drop those down just a little bit to make that adaptable for that student. If my third grade student is at a higher level, then it's going to go to fourth grade, fifth grade. And what we call, we try to get them pinpointed, and so if they are pinpointed at 35 or 350, that means they're at third grade five months, so that's where they should be right now. And then, so the IXL takes the scores from the diagnostic test plus any skills that I may have assigned or any teacher has assigned, and gives them recommendations that they can also log in and just work on recommendations that I may have given them or the IXL program could have given them. The IXL effect is just they, it's recommended that they answer 30 questions a week. And so, right here at grade school, the last few weeks, it moved itself to 60 because we have been working in the program so much. So we didn't set that goal for 60. IXL does that. So the more you work at it, the higher the goal. You notice middle school's already up at 130 questions a week. I know, they're often, it's often in a, yes, Valerie's going to sing some phrases in a second.
Does it measure how many questions they got right?
Yes, it has, it has something called a SMART score, and so that actually, a lot of people may think, oh, that's 80 out of 100, like 100%, but it actually takes everything into account. How many do they answer? How many do they get wrong?
That's what I'm going to talk to, talk about that with this. First slide is this. So before I talk about that, I just want to kind of give a report from the high school. The grade school, like you said, has been using this just kind of as an addition to the curriculum. So if they go over a certain topic or topics in the past, they would just kind of use it as just an additional practice tool. And so high school is a little bit different because we are, you know, we're not a grade level type situation. It's just classes. And so at the high school, I just want to speak that all of our English and math teachers are using the diagnostic, and we're tracking the scores each quarter where our students are in math and English, language arts. And then the science and the history classes are using it just as a, as a skill tool. My chemistry students, there are skills on there that my chemistry students can work on. It's very neat for high school because in social studies and history, they have, you can search by topic, and you could type in like the War of 1812, and the teachers can assign based on topic. And that's what I do in chemistry. I find a topic we're working on, atoms and molecules, and I assign that to my students, and we work. In science and history, it's more of a challenge. Get five in a row right, and you get a little gold star and a score. It's set up really neat. Even the high schoolers really enjoy the readability of it. But if they get a question wrong, right there it says, did you get this wrong? This is how you do it. And click here for a video, and it might give you a two-minute video or less. Or it may just have a diagram, like you should have looked at this, and this is how you get it right. So if they take a moment and read, they're going to, they're going to get the rest of them right. It's very neat because it'll teach them kind of a skill as they go. And as a teacher, you can set up a feature called Live Classroom, and I can see which of my students are in the green and who's in the red. And if they're in the red, I can send them a quick message right there without going, hey, you're in the red. What's wrong with you? You know, I can send them a little message, or I can walk through and go check on them and maybe give them some extra help in person. So it's, it's got some really neat features that are usable for the teachers. We can track the minutes used or this SMART score. And a lot of our teachers use them as bell ringers, sometimes as homework, virtual days. There's a lot of ways our teachers use them and take grades. So this, if you look at your book, the very front cover is what Rhoda went over, and we have it set up elementary, all of the slides from elementary, and then all the slides from middle, and then all the slides from high. So, but we took them, each of them and kind of set them up. So this is the mastery slide for each. It's the purple one, and you can see that the dark purple is mastered. We want our students to get proficiency, which is the light purple. But the dark purple means that they got a SMART score of 100, and then the light purple, it means they got a SMART score of 80. Our goal is 80. Mastering the skill, you know, is great, but being proficient in the skill is what we want. Because as soon as a student hits 80, they can keep going and try to get to 100, but they can stop at 80, and all of our teachers know that until the student's that. So our goal is certainly proficiency, to get as many skills as proficient as possible. Our goal is two per week, two skills per week, and I think our teachers are exceeding that completely. So you can kind of see, in the high school, a lot of them are doing just the bare minimum. You know, the proficient, there's not as much mastery or up from that 80 to 100 range. They're going to get just what they need to get done and be done with it. But this is like candy if you get the 100, or like, you know, there's a little bit more reward, I think, for the lower grades on that. And you can see kind of spikes, especially in middle and high. This was a week that we had virtual. You know, we're using this from home. It's really neat because the students can log in from home and work through a skill and practice what they've been learning in the classroom that week. So we definitely want our kids proficient in that skill. That means that they've made an 80 or higher on that, and it gives them a little banner, like a badge, and then they can move along, and they get those little badges on the system. There's some really neat ways to set goals and to give kids certificates if they make a certain goal. There's a lot of positive reinforcement there. So this, go ahead.
Jessica, one thing, you mentioned if they get a question wrong, they can scroll down, and it may, it'll tell them how to fix it. And I feel like that kind of gives them, that makes them have some ownership and accountability because, you know, they might choose not to even check it and just move on to the next question. And so once we, you know, can teach them, hey, look, this is how you fix this.
Are you able to see any of these from the parent's portal too?
Well, if they log in from home, certainly they can see their student working. I had a teacher who has a student in the middle school on a virtual day, had messaged me, and I was busy and didn't get it quite in time to help, but she said, my daughter's struggling on IXL and science, can you help? And by the time I got it, I said, oh, yeah, I can certainly help. What does she need help on? She said, oh, never mind. She's figured it out. And, because I said, well, did she scroll just a little bit because at the bottom, you know, had a wrong question? And she said, oh, yeah, we watched a little video, and she hasn't missed one yet. So she's got it. And so it only took a second for them to kind of figure out that, that part of it, and the students are getting used to that, I think. And so she said, oh, we're good. She totally understands it now. So, you know, I didn't even have to help. But, but it is neat that they're able to, you know, get, get there on that. So. I've got one more to show you. This is a neat graphic on the turquoise page, and it kind of shows you at school and at home how we can, we can do it. It says that we have done 7,000 questions from home at the grade, 16,000, and then over 29,000 from home with high school. And I think that kind of speaks to what Rhoda said, where they don't really take their Chromebooks home, you know. So, and I think that some of this is in after-school program as well. The home is like after 3:30 or something like that, the setting. But I do want to say that a lot of our high school teachers, I can speak, give it as homework. They'll say, this week, IXL, these are your two IXL skills. You need to have a SMART score of 80 by Friday, and, and they don't use it in their classroom. There are some classes where they're, they're going over their content, getting their stuff done, and they use it as extra. Some teachers use it as a bell ringer. Some of them, you know, it just depends on what the teacher. And I like that, from a teacher's perspective, that the teachers have the autonomy kind of to decide how they want to use it. If you're asking them to work for 15 minutes, they might not get to 80. So they, they might say, I want you a full 15 minutes, and IXL tracks the minutes that are active and the minutes that are idle. And so the teachers and students have been able to kind of understand what the assignment is. It's compatible with Google Classroom, which is very neat. Our teachers are able just to share it to Google, and the students are able to see that assignment. And I want to tell one more story before I get to Valerie. We have a student who is an ELL student who doesn't speak very much English, and this student specifically is in an English class where the student's kind of drowning. There's a lot of topics that the student doesn't understand, and the English teacher came to me and said, I, can I use IXL? This, I mean, I feel like this would be something great for this student. And the teacher was able to, the unit, the unit that just passed was commas. And that class was just bouncing right along with commas. They were doing a lot of things. And the teacher was able to assign commas on IXL to this student, starting out on a fourth grade level because that's what the student diagnosed at in that initial diagnostic. And so that student was able to start working on some fourth grade comma skills, and it moved up, you know, to fifth grade, and then it moved up to sixth grade. And so that student was able to work on commas on that student's level and kind of stay with the class and still get graded on assignments and do, do that student's work while the other students are doing something very similar. So I thought that was a really neat way that we can kind of differentiate our learning rather than go into a fourth grade teacher who's not at our site. It's like, hey, do you have any fourth grade comma work that I can give to my student? And then them get back to you, and then you make copies for that student, and it's, it's just right there. And the student isn't called out. It was very, you know, discreet, and that student was able to learn and fill out those gaps and truly like make progress in, in English, which I think is just incredible. So our high school teachers are really enjoying it. It took a little bit of time to understand, and I still help a few of my neighbors with the clicks and things and the grading. But as a whole, we've really enjoyed this program, and I'm excited for you guys to see our growth. Ms. Lewis is going to do that.
I don't know if there's any relevance this is about, but have you found a term whether they do better at school or at home? I don't know if there's even.
Maybe. I, I know that personally, I have students who, from home, it seems like they focus more. There's a little less of that idle time.
Really, Alex, I would expect the opposite.
Yeah, me too.
But at school, and in virtual days, some of them do buddy up on virtual days. I mean, they just do. They spend the night with each other. You can tell they're online at the same time, or they're buddy on the phone or whatever, doing it at the same time.
Your aunt's around.
In high school. Oh, yeah, I know. So you can tell they kind of buddy up on things, but on IXL, you can't really buddy. And it's, it's everybody, you might be working on the same skill, but you've got different questions, and you've got to, you know. So I think, you know, it just kind of depends. But I think that my experience from at home, they really do get in there and get it done on this because it's just so independent in where they are, they're working, and they're answering it. They get to their, their goal, and they're done. Whereas in class, there's a lot of distractions and things if they're working on it in class. But we do both. So, all right. Ms. Lewis, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, sister.
They didn't leave a lot for me to talk about.
No, you got it. Which one do I?
The right arrow right there. Step back. Before I go into that, I did want to talk about how we feel about IXL at the middle school. When Renaissance did away with their math program, I was devastated. I'm mourned. I mean, I wanted to wear black every day because I was so sad because I just thought there's never going to be a program that I like better. And I can say that IXL is that program. I'd probably like it more, and I never thought I would say that. The last two or three online programs that we've had, I have not liked at all because I, I couldn't find where it helped my kids, and I couldn't find the information that I needed. This has all of that information. And one of my favorite things is the Live Classroom, and they both spoke about that. I can set that up, and at middle school, a lot of times, students don't want their friends to think that they're stupid, so they're not going to raise their hand and ask a question. And a lot of times, I don't know that they need help on something until I get their paper, and it's an F or a D, and I may think they're rocking right along because they're just working away. But that Live Classroom, it will show up kind of a salmon color to let me know that they are struggling. And I don't have to make a big deal out of it. You know, as I'm filtering around the room, I'll just stop and watch somebody that is saying that is having a hard time. I'll just watch them. I'll say, let me show you. And I can just show them two or three times, and they've got it, and they just go right on along. And another reason why I like this program, and I use it every single day in my classroom, if I gave them a worksheet, and I'll tell you, as an old-school teacher, that was really hard for me to get away from worksheets. I mean, I want a worksheet. But if I give a worksheet to every student and they make a 50 on it, they just have a 50 on that worksheet. And I may not understand exactly which pinpointed skill they're struggling with. I just know that they struggle with page 47, which might have five different skills on it. But with IXL, the student really has more control over what their grade is because I use this in my classrooms to take grades. And if they miss some, and then they, they work through that, either I help them or they read below where it explains how to do it, or they watch the video, or however they get help, and then they improve, that SMART score goes up. It doesn't have to stay at a 50. It keeps going up and keeps going up. And my kids really want to make the 100. If they get to 80, some of them will stop at 80, and that's considered proficient. But a lot of mine would work to get that 100 because they want the bonus points, and I give bonus points if they get 100. But we, especially my A students, they always want bonus points.
I give K D, she gets points.
Yes.
I just give them a thumbs up.
It works, though.
It all works. But I also like the arena work, too. We, we enter the arena once a week, and in my class, I bought a WWE belt, and so when I have that up, they know that it's arena time. But I put like a Velcro thing on it, and when they walk in, they know it's arena time. And of course, the first time, I had to flip it over my shoulder and had to talk like I was a wrestler, and they loved that.
Okay. Does anyone else can ask her to do it?
If I, if I act silly, it works.
I'm good, but I'm afraid I'll get body scared.
They say I'm bored, ready, we want the bell.
Okay, I'm ready to bell. I'll, I'll even, I'll, I'll talk like a wrestler. But anyway, so on Arena Day, they know that that's our challenge, and I set up a challenge with my classes. And so at the end of the month, the class that has the biggest improvement gets a party, and they get to bring snacks, and I either show a movie or we play games, which of course, they're all math games, but they like that, though. But anyway, every Wednesday, as soon as that arena time is finished, they're like, okay, are we number one yet? Are we number one yet? And of course, I always say, okay, guys, let me shut the door, and I want the other kids to hear, but I put y'all in there. And so I'm constantly pushing them to work harder. But those, those recommendations in, in their list are all of the things that they're struggling on. So when they go in there as a bell ringer, for the first 10 minutes, they work on the recommendations, and they can ask for help from a neighbor, from me, from anybody. And all of those are the things that are going to help fill those gaps. And I have students that work on telling time. Well, I don't teach telling time in the sixth grade. That's not one of my standards, but they still need to learn how to tell time. So that recommendation is there because they scored low on that on their diagnostic. And so for the first 10 minutes, they are working on all of those suggested skills, and they know that that's how they're going to get to that party at the end of the month. Because if they work to improve those skills, then their diagnostic score is going to go up. And I mean, they are diehard. They want those scores up, and they work really hard. And as soon as they finish the arena, they'll say, well, my score wasn't high enough. Can I go back in? And I'll say, well, just one, once a week, and next week, we'll work on that again. But they want to win that at the end of the month. But our seventh grade math teacher and I were talking about the fact that IXL really puts them in a place where they can choose what their grade is. And I have had, my grades just skyrocket since I have started using these as my grades. I don't have anyone on the mental list right now and haven't in quite some time. And it's because they know that, that they are in control. Now, I have some kids that don't get that 80, but they don't get the full credit for that assignment. They only get partial credit for that assignment. They may get a 20 out of 25. But if they hit that proficient score of 80, they get a 25 out of 25, and they'll work to get those bonus points, which has helped them. Another thing that all of us have used at the middle school, and we have loved, is the group jam. A group jam is set up almost like a game, and as soon as I start the group jam, I get to choose what skills I've put in there, and all of those skills are state standards that, that we're using. And I can choose as many skills as I want for that jam. And as soon as I get it started, it shows up on all of my students' Chromebooks, just like it shows up on my big meeting board. And as they're answering, it will tell me how many students are getting it right and how many are missing it. So if I see that there are several students missing, I'll say, okay, everybody stop. Let's work this out together. And when they see it worked out, then the next time, boy, I just see those scores going up, and it's pretty quick. I mean, I absolutely love it. And then at the end of the jam, it will tell who's on the leaderboard. Now, it will tell everybody's scores, but you have to scroll, and I don't scroll. I wait till they leave, and then I'll scroll down and then take a quick picture so that I know what their score was because it doesn't store it in that system for a group jam because it's just kind of like a game. But it's great to prepare for a test, which is also something that we have enjoyed on IXL because you can set up your own test, and they have just a huge bank of questions, way more than what I have in here. A lot more. So, so I can choose what skills I want to test on, which will be the skills that I've used over the past week or over the past month, or I can even do like a non-week test or semester test. And I choose how many questions I want for each specific skill, and then it will make a test for me. And if I go back through there and I'll say, okay, now I don't like that particular question, I can change it, but I can also change how difficult I want those questions. And my kids have gotten where they'll say, put it on the hard ones. They want the hard ones. They don't want me to give a level one or a level two. They want a level four, you know, or whatever the highest level is for that question. And I had a student, or a couple of students, decided they were going to take my test in another teacher's class, which I don't let them do. And so when they came to my class, they'd already taken the test, and I said, that's okay. I can get another one because on this, you can make one like that, and I love that. I'm like, it's okay. It's not a big deal. You can just retake it. All the questions. So we have loved it. Every teacher at the middle school has just raved about how they can use it, and we love using it in different ways. You know, how I use it in my classroom is going to be different than the seventh grade math teacher or the sixth grade reading teacher. And, but there's so many different ways to use it, and it's all just good stuff for kids. And I think the kids enjoy having that time and showing the improvement that they've shown. Okay, so this shows our overall growth, and the blue is math and the green is language arts. This is for the grade school. This is the middle school, and this is the high school growth. And I do want to point out right here, at first, when I looked at that, I thought, oh, that is so middle school. You know, they, they probably had a day where they were thinking about stuff. Well, then it started really bothering me as a math person. I had to know exactly why that dip was in there. So I went back through and looked at each individual grade, and what happened was, one of our teachers didn't realize that she needed to go into the arena every single week because that's how you keep them pinpointed. And so she had skipped a week or maybe two weeks. She thought she was only supposed to do it, you know, once a month or whatever. And so for that week, we didn't have a score, but now she does it every week. So she just didn't realize that she needed to do it every week. So that was what the dip was. And it's not a huge thing if they don't go into the arena every week, but it does keep them pinpointed if they do. But I did want to show you this growth in math. I think this is amazing. Okay, you have that entered? Okay, this is the last page that we've, we've added. Thank you. Okay, the dark green and the light green shows the students that are above grade level and on grade level. And you'll notice in August, when school started, we had, this is in math, we had a total of two hundred four. And then November eleventh, it went up to two hundred sixty-five, which is a thirty percent increase. Then the below level, below grade level means that they are below the point that they're supposed to be in the year. Like if we started in August and it was a sixth grader, they should be at a six point zero. And then in November, we should, let's see, August, September, October, November, they should be at a six point three. So if they're below that, then they're considered below grade level. If it is far below grade level, that means that they are one and a half years below. And you can see here, we started out with a lot more students below grade level than, or far below grade level than what we have now. Now, we do have a section of students that weren't pinpointed at the very beginning of the year. The very first diagnostic test takes a long, long, long time to finish. And sometimes either they didn't complete that to be pinpointed or it may be that some of these students were not here in August. And then we had some that had like two, two different login information, you know, like. Yes, two accounts. Thank you. Thank you for that word. And they had two accounts. They had, it might have been a hyphenated last name or something, or maybe their name changed or something like that and they had two accounts. So we've kind of cleaned that up, but we did have some that did not get pinpointed. I think a lot of those were seniors, right?
Yeah, and I'll speak, I'll speak to the seniors and our virtual students don't pinpoint typically because they don't, they're not here on our campus using iXL for standards. Our virtual students use a completely different program. And so they don't have accounts. But I want to show you guys the twelfth grade. We have a lot of seniors who don't take math and we have a lot of eleventh graders who, you know, are virtual and those are our two highest grades that are on virtual. So they don't pinpoint. But I also wanted to mention in math, for the high school grades, ninth grade is Algebra One on iXL. It's considered a ninth grade skill. But tenth grade is considered geometry. And our students don't take that until eleventh grade. And so I think that is why our eleventh grade is marking so low so far because they're just now in geometry and they've already had Algebra Two, which is considered a junior year iXL skill. So it's backwards for iXL. It's something that we couldn't change. I did ask them about that. But I have a feeling our math scores are going to jump as our eleventh graders get further into geometry because that's considered a tenth grade skill. And then again, our twelfth grade, we don't have very many twelfth graders at all that take math. And so they, they're not pinpointed in math. And I do want to say some students will pinpoint. And what that means is their grade level is established by that diagnostic. And then let's say they step into the arena, they get pinpointed and then they work on a math skill by their teacher that they're doing that week. They might get a few wrong and unpinpoint. And then pinpoint again a few hours later. And it's an ongoing diagnostic, which is neat because the arena time does pinpoint you. But then as you work on skills, your pinpoint may change a little up or down as you work and learn more things. So these levels are constantly changing. This data was pulled on Friday, November eleventh, at noon, I pulled them. And we had just, like she said, cleaned up accounts, made sure all of our students who had moved away were out. All of our new students are in. So this is current data.
And everyone has one account.
Everybody has one account. And then on your papers, math is on one side and ELA is on the other. So anyway.
That seems like the amount that's far below grade level is a little, is that concerning or is that a matter?
Well, I do think that it's concerning, but I'm liking the progress because I feel like too, a lot of these students were already on there because grade school was already using iXL. And then as they're in here, they're kind of more used to it. But here, these kiddos are just starting out. So when they pinpoint, they take this hour-long diagnostic test and it kind of bumps them up or down. And then as they continue, I think this is definitely more accurate. But I feel like the more they work, the more comprehensive picture that they'll get of the student as they progress. But yes, it is definitely concerning because this right here, we, you know, it kind of, we drop here from that red. Math is our weakest. If you want to click to the ELA, I don't know if you wanted to speak anymore on that. Our ELA has dramatically improved, I think, a little bit more with the coloring you can see. But yeah, I mean, it's definitely concerning. But I think as we continue through, it'll just keep getting better and we'll see more and more growth and progress.
We will be back in April after the third quarter.
Okay.
Sitting right, sitting there.
We plan to do what's called a snapshot, which is where they have five days to diagnose. You have this window this week. Everybody's going to go and diagnose your snapshot score. And it pinpoints exactly what their level is at that point. And this is what we did. That was that initial snapshot. And then we'll do another snapshot at the end of quarter two in December and then another one in April. And so we'll be able to put three in a row and then we'll have the four in a row. So we're planning to just keep diagnosing and looking at this. And I think that the students are figuring it out. They're progressing on it. Our teachers are, you know, giving incentives. And I think the more that we do it, the better it'll be and we're getting closer and closer.
So this is like a snapshot, like one test, not a running average of average grades.
Right. Well, this is like where they were on Friday at this moment. So it's, it's a picture of current levels versus the current level on August twenty-sixth. And it's, but it's an ongoing level. If I'm a tenth grader and I'm in the yellow, next week I might be in the light green and then I might jump back down to the yellow depending on my progress and how I answer my questions. And it's neat because it's just ongoing. As they step into the arena once a week, that pinpoint happens. And a lot of our students, especially on high school, they're below. And they're looking at that and they're like, what does seven fifty mean? And their teacher's like, that means you're measuring on the seventh grade level, fifth grade. And they're like, what? And they want to do good. You know, they take ownership of that level and they see that they're not really on level. And that, you know, is definitely a motivator as they move forward. Pay attention to those questions. Get those questions right and you're going to, you're going to keep improving. So.
We've also had new learning loss from COVID that we're having to deal with. And so just trying to find, I think this program is going to be really helpful in helping us close those gaps.
One of the things that I looked at on this one, I mean, go back to math. And because I teach sixth grade math, I look at this and look at the difference between fifth grade and sixth grade and how many were way behind. But these kids were in third grade when COVID hit. And as a former third grade teacher, I know how important that last nine weeks of third grade is. Like that is when they start doing things more independently. That's when you're getting them ready for that individual test. And, you know, that, that last nine weeks in third grade is crucial. It is crucial for math. And you can see, like, there's the line. I mean, it's like huge difference. And but when you look at the improvement, these kids are not showing, I mean, they're showing great improvement. But when you look at just grade school and just middle school and just high school, and you're seeing more improvement as they get older. Like the, because that gap isn't here. And the gap grows as they're getting older. But we're seeing more improvement in middle school than in grade school and then more improvement in high school than in middle school because that gap is greater. And they're having to, to narrow that gap. And it's because from sixth grade on, these kids were in very, I mean, like independent grades where they are doing things more independently when COVID hit. And from third grade on, you know, which I'm not saying that second and third aren't crucial. They are crucial. But in first and second grade, you're doing things more as a class and more together. And then in third grade, that last nine weeks, it's very important. But that's what I was looking at with the sixth grade. It just seemed like there was a line there. And that's, these kids were third graders when COVID hit. And there's a definite line there. But look at them now. Okay, I like seeing this green and yellow bar moving out. It's just squeezing that orange one right off there. So I love that. That's all that I have. Anyone have any questions?
I just want to say on the half of all sites, thank you for iXL. We are very excited. Our students are learning motivated. It's been a really amazing part of our year so far.
I assume it's a time saver too and you're not spending so much time grading versus teaching personally.
It can do, for sure. And I think too, what Valerie mentioned is by the time you assign a worksheet or paper for homework and you get it back and by the time you grade everybody's, you know, it's been several days.
It's not immediate.
It's not. It's, you know, it just died in itself. As a teacher, hearing her say that, I'm like, that's not right. I mean, what, what are we doing? We're wasting so much time, you know? Anyway, we just, we motivate each other and we're really, you know, feed off each other to each other. And I think that this will keep evolving as we go through and our students get used to it. But I think that the progress, you know, is really there.
Thank you guys very much.
We're ready to keep going.
Yes.
More green, more green.
And I see that this program and, and all of us being involved in it has brought our sites together too, I feel like. Because even in just our building, we are interacting every day about, okay, did you see this? And did you do this? And I'm using it this way and have you seen this yet? And not just with the math department, but the math and English department are working together and grade school and middle school and high school are all working together. And we're in constant contact with each other. And we didn't have that with any other program. And I love that too because it's like we're all working together for one common focus. And that's what we should be doing.
Thank you guys for your dedication to it too. It's like you really put a lot of time and effort into it. Appreciate that.
It's good for kids.
You guys sound excited.
Yeah.
If the teachers are excited, then the kids are going to be excited.
Any excitement you can get, you know, put into a child to make them want to learn. Get something new on this level. That's very important. And it meets them on their level. You know, if you can have. Oh, 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 I forgot. Okay. This is, it was a really sweet story. So this is a student that I don't have in my sixth grade class. I have her in my iXL class, which means that she was having problems. And she started out the year with a really low grade in math. And she was coming to me and she was not wanting to interact when they were doing the group jam. And her teacher had also spoken about, you know, she's really reluctant to answer. And it was because she lacked the confidence. It wasn't that she couldn't do it. She just needed the confidence. And so we started working on iXL together and working through all of the stuff. And she comes running down the hallway, of course, it was a paper, she was running. But she came running down the hallway and she was holding her paper. She said, Ms. Lewis, Ms. Lewis, I have to show you this. I was on the leaderboard today. I got on the leaderboard and I said, did you do all of this work? And it was so good. And she was solving multi-step equations and it was great. And I said, this is really good. Can I write on this paper? She said, yes. So I wrote all over how much I, I thought she was wonderful and how smart she is and all of that. And she kept that set out on her desk the whole hour so she could look at it. But now she's coming to me every week and saying, I was on the leaderboard. I was on the leaderboard. And she's answering questions in class now and she's not as reluctant as she was before because she needed to see that she could do it. And it has just been amazing. And I love it. I love seeing the kids excited about it. And they love seeing her name on the leaderboard when they struggled before. And this, this meets every kid. I can have a really high kid that works on an eighth or ninth grade level in the sixth grade and it's going to meet them. It's, and it's going to challenge them. And then if I have a kid that is working on first and second grade, it's going to help them too. It's going to help fill those gaps. And it's bringing them up to the level that they need to be. I just can't say enough. Greatness to them.
Thank you girls so much.
These are examples of what we're putting in front of teachers, I mean, in front of students every day. So we should be proud.
We're thankful that you invested in this, into this so we can have this work. We really appreciate it. It's a great program.
As long as I don't have to take the test on common. You've done it there.
Put you on a first, you're taking great levels.
I'm bringing my wristband. You just come on in. I don't worry. It's been exciting.
I should make my bread, second by David to approve the minutes from October tenth, eight twenty, meeting Brad.
Yes.
And Susan. Thank you all. Bye.
Bye.
This time we move on to the trickle of encumbrances.
Okay, if you look at page one on encumbrances, relatively short list. If you look at two sixty-two, we'll start there. That's a hotel room for a state one X speech competition. Two sixty-three, Apogee is, that's our, we have our website and our school app. Do then, remember, we changed our website in the middle of the year, last year. That's why that's going to do at this time of year. Two sixty-four, puddles is a subscription service that our sports team uses for scouting. And so pay in that for that service. On down, if you look at two sixty-nine and two seventy, if you remember, our ag program received a lottery grant. Second time that Mr. Cody has applied and received that lottery grant. So this is to spend part of the proceeds to buy new welders in the ag program.
So it's all grant money?
That's all lottery grant, yes. Then you can see two seventy-two, pay FFA Association dues for the year to that organization. Two seventy-three, this is, we use the Dave Ramsey curriculum as a part of our leadership program for leadership class for juniors. And somehow, Mr. Walker found out that if you buy them now, you get a discount. So we're wanting to go ahead and purchase that curriculum and that'll be for next school year. But it's at a reduced rate right now. So want to take advantage of that. It's a good program for those kids. It's that financial literacy portion of that leadership program. Two seventy-four, CW, CDW, it says JOM esports equipment. As a part of our JOM, we were awarded four thousand extra dollars this year. And when we went to the superintendent's luncheon, the Chalk Toll Nation, they, they kind of gave a presentation on three different programs that they're pushing right now in public schools. And one of them is esports. And if you remember, we just started an esports program here this last year. So we're using that four thousand and they wanted it designated for one of those three programs. So us having esports, we're using that to buy equipment for that program. And then two seventy-five through two seventy-eight, those four individuals went to the technology conference this last month. So that's to pay for their reimbursements for that conference. On the next page is a payroll encumbrance for Dennis Wright. On the next page is, uh, a payroll encumbrance for Dennis Wright. Uh, page, the third page is building fund. The P O thirteen is lake area construction and that's getting us ready to do the work to the outside of the gym. And hopefully, they'll be starting that pretty quick. Uh, fourteen, data testing Inc. is for the, uh, analysis on the potential future grade school site, uh, to do that geological analysis there. And then fifteen, Stigler Printing, if you remember, we voted to rename this building. And that's to put a high quality sign out front, uh, with the name, new name for the administration building on the outside.
Mr. Number thirteen, I know we, uh, what are we doing at the gym? There are those pressure washes on the outside.
They're pressure washed. They're gonna retexture the areas that need it and then repaint the gym.
So, is, so is it completed? Is this, is this the total amount?
Yes.
So, the whole project's done?
Done. No, this is just encumbering the money. They have, they have not started. The next. The, uh, the next page, Quill Corporation, that, that's just, uh, an order to quill, uh, a P O for supplies there. The following page, uh, if you remember, just in, we're using a little higher amount of certified substitutes, which means they either have a teaching degree or a four-year degree. And, uh, also, we have, for instance, like, uh, Coach Carey's been at an extended amount of time. And to get a good person in there on a, on a free, uh, on a regular basis to take care of that class while he's out and that kind of thing, we needed to add to that amount. And then, a little bit, a change order for additional tutoring at the middle school. And then, next page, uh, has one item, uh, Ms. Simcoe. And she went, uh, took, decided to take out, uh, before the deadline, uh, medical insurance. Is, that's what that fifty-nine hundred and seventy-three dollars is. And then, the state reimburses us that amount for her. So, that is the encumbrances.
I should make my day and second by correct to approve the encumbrances, David.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
This time move on to other financial reports.
Okay. So, we, first off, as each month, we kinda look over our, our cash balances. If you look at our, our general fund of, uh, amounts, we end the month pretty healthy at, uh, one point four million in the bank, in the general fund account. Next, building fund, as we go down, we still, in this month, at nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, still be awaiting, uh, reimbursement on, uh, several hundred thousand dollars in claims. So, this amount will go up substantially, hopefully, in the next month or year. And then, child nutrition, we'll bring to you kinda how we fare the first semester in child nutrition. It's a little rocky road getting started. But the last couple of months, last month, we actually brought in a few hundred dollars more in claims than we spent. And that was a welcome result after we looked at August, uh, how we did in August. We had to do some work, but our people did a good job of kind of going back and examining things and getting things back on the beaten path. And then, this month, we spent a little more than we had in claims, so we're still working on that. But right now, as in the past, child nutrition was not self-sufficient. At right, and right now, we're still self-sufficient in, in child nutrition. So, that's the goal. And so, we end the month, uh, with two hundred and thirty-seven thousand in child nutrition. Then, um, we're looking for the future in this year. Uh, you can kinda see for October, our contracted salaries, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand. We added a couple of employees to this, so you can see it went up a little bit from last month, extra salary this month total. As compared to, uh, last year at this time, we were sixty-five hundred dollars over this year compared to last year. Right now, in salaries, we're still ahead, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Down at, uh, in the bills for this month, we come in at a hundred and sixty-six thousand. I thought we were gonna come in under, but then, you remember, we, uh, bought some Chromebooks with a grant. And that bill came due, I believe that was sixty-four thousand. So, we ended the month with a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in bills as compared to a hundred and thirty-nine five last year. So, we were over from last year, uh, about twenty-seven thousand. So, for the year total, we're over from last year about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. I wanted to show you this slide. And, uh, because we, we, we don't show this a lot, I look at it a lot. But this actually has a second page and basically, it's just comparing two thousand eighteen, nineteen through the year, bills, salaries, gives you all of our totals down at the bottom. If you look though, this is, uh, two thousand twenty, twenty-one. This was the first school year after we started dealing with COVID. Uh, we knew our revenue was gonna be a lot lower and our revenue come in. Remember, our, our expenditures were a little bit over our, uh, revenue that year at ten-three. Last year, we had an influx of grant money and other things. Our expenditures were just over eleven million dollars. Uh, and we had a carryover. So, it just depends on what kind of grant volatility and what kind of extra revenue. Now, this, you know, right now, at this point, what I'm gonna do a lot, we'll show, we show on, on this one compared to last year. But what I'm gonna look at a lot throughout the year is compared to twenty twenty-one. Because it's gonna be a little closer. We're looking at projected revenue. Last year, we brought in about eleven, eleven million two hundred. This year, we were, we brought in about ten-three. It was about even with our expenditures. I figure this year at the end, we're projecting at about ten million seven hundred. So, we can't just go on last year's. With our projected income, we need to kinda start looking at the year before and trying to keep ourselves in pace with that. So, if you look at our total now at two point nine nine seven, last year at this time, we were two eight five three. And then, year before, we spent a little more in the beginning and tailed off toward the end. But we were at two nine seven one. But throughout the year, we wanna kinda compare ourselves to the year before. Kinda get in the same, center of all parts.
Revenue is strongly dependent on enrollment, right?
It can be, because enrollment or average daily membership is gonna drive your per pupil revenue.
And is like our, is our enrollment, I know we've talked about this before, is it trending, which way is it trending? I guess it's really.
Our enrollment, and we'll talk about that, we just got our enrollment analysis from the OSSBA. It's trending down. Uh, he made the comment that, when we were talking about that after he had completed it. And we'll, we'll have all that stuff available in December. But, uh, he said, well, you're not doing too bad. And I said, we're not doing too bad. We've lost about a hundred and fifty kids in the last five years. And you're projecting us to lose a hundred more. So, out of his definition, higher than that are different. So, that's gonna be something that, as we, as that is the trend, we're, that's our faculty, our staff, everything's gonna have to reflect that.
It can get tougher and tougher.
You bet.
If that trend continues.
In two to three years, and, uh, with political landscape, everything going on, it's gonna get tough. So, we need to make sure that we're preparing for that.
Uh, this may be jumping ahead, but they gave me, what's the cause of that trend or do they have a, why do they pick them up?
On our population, he goes back, he's, when his projections, he's using live birth, like a kid even born yesterday. And, uh, do that, but we really, I see statewide, your suburbs are growing, your rural areas are shrinking.
Do you think it's moving towards epic?
No, because we've gotten a lot of our epic kids back, a- as a state. They're back down to about their normal levels. And we saw last year midterm adjustments, they had to pay back, because they couldn't, they couldn't, uh, retain that enrollment. So, that helped us. So, we've seen a lot of that go back down to about their normal enrollment.
Could be jobs to some level.
I think it's hard for rural areas to retain those kids once they graduate because of jobs. A lot of them commute.
Which boils back down to economic development.
Mm-hmm.
Which boils down to facilities.
A lot of things, doesn't it? It's a chain reaction. But we'll be looking at that, what, a lot of what, um, if you remember, for instance, what made this expenditures high and our revenue high last year was we bought those buses. That, two to three of those, we bought with pastor money. So, uh, uh, those two route buses, so that, that adds to your expenses, but it also adds to your revenue if you're pulling it out of that pastor money to put into the gym. So, but we'll keep an eye on that as we go, go through the year. So, that's other funding.
This time we move on to cover comment reporting, uh, education invites back the comment at this point in the regular meeting. A comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy B E D dash R, no one present for that. Information items, A superintendent's report.
Okay, and I'd like to remind everybody to take a, if you haven't, take a look at our, our Stigler Public Schools Facebook page. And they're doing a great job of keeping updates on those, on that, to things that are going on in the, in the district. Doing a great job of reporting and that's exactly why we, we wanted that social media presence in the beginning. Um, I'd like to commend our different sites for their Veterans Day ceremonies last Friday. Uh, there's a video on Facebook of the assembly that took place at the high school. Uh, our s- high school skeet shooting team, you might see that on there. Won the southeast area sporting plays contest and will be, uh, in the state competition on November the fifteenth. Uh, Cole Hamlin was high individual with a perfect score of twenty out of twenty. And, uh, Jacob, uh, Merle placed third with a score of nineteen out of twenty. So, they'll be heading to state on November fifteenth. We were just talking about this, uh, yes, they, we were just talking about this earlier. Are we have any players left? Uh, we'll have our first annual powder puff football, uh, tournament, I guess. Uh, that is, uh, yeah, we may have a school board team. That's also tomorrow with teams from all four high school classes along with a team made up of female high school teachers. And this is sponsored by the FCC LA and the Student Council as a, as a fundraiser.
It's for the young children.
That's relative.
Maybe, isn't it? A younger.
We found out that our varsity cheerleaders received the academic achievement award for having a three point six five combined GPA and being in the top ten percent of class four A. Uh, S H S band, marching band receive all superior ratings at the regional marching competition with several individuals and ensembles receiving superior and excellent ratings. Uh, our one act speech team placed third at the regional one act, uh, competition to qualify for the state competition. And Keegan Good, Will Rhodes, and Kenley Ward were selected as all-region actors. Uh, Stigler Grace School hosted their annual fall festival with games, face painting, and other activities for students to take part in this last month. Uh, high school football team, I've been waiting for a long time to say this, defeated Holland Hall last Friday night to advance to the second round of playoffs. And guess what? Heritage Hall this Friday night, so dress in warm. Um, yearbook, I just, uh, received a text this evening before I come in here. A former teacher, Mr. Mitchell Byrd, texted me because their competition goes off last year's tech, uh, yearbook. He informed me that our, they were up in Norman today at this, uh, presentation. And our yearbook, once again, won sweepstakes award. Uh, that makes ten out of the last thirteen years that, uh, they were recognized as sweepstakes, uh, yearbook in the state book home. And it is for the last seven straight that they won. So, uh, had a little text conversation with Mr. Byrd about that. And, uh, appreciate his service. Um, we had, uh, data testing Inc. completed film work involved in geotechnical analysis at the potential future elementary school site on Friday. They were here on Friday to take care of that. Uh, we had from the OSSBA planning service, we had, uh, Mr. Danny Jardine. He was here a couple of weeks ago and he has been working on our, uh, enrollment analysis. We were just talking about, we'll have that one for you in December to take a look at. And then, also, this last Monday, we had, uh, Joe Saano and Amber Fitzgerald were here. And they met with the different community groups. They met with administrators, then a group of middle school and high school students, and all these are about an hour each. Um, a group of varied, uh, support personnel, uh, community and business, uh, teachers, and then parents throughout the day. So, they've had a long day and, uh, they asked each group a series of questions. We should be getting feedback from that, uh, within the next week weekend. So, uh, that'll be interesting feedback as we proceed. Uh, but that is superintendent's report.
This time we move on to action topics. Action topic A, consideration of revision of board of education meetings, noted action procedures and policy dash B E.
Okay, and I'm gonna talk about these two action topics somewhat together, uh, B and C, just mention C. Because, uh, tonight, we're voting on a board meeting schedule for the next calendar year. And, uh, in looking at this, there's a couple of times it would just be prudent to have the board meeting either on the first Monday night of the month or on a Tuesday night a couple of times. Uh, for instance, uh, in January, we come back to school on the ninth, which would be our normal board meeting night. But it takes a lot of the week before for our folks in the office to prepare for a board meeting and get things ready. So, I'd hate to have it when we come back on Monday, because they work one day each that, that week before. So, if we look at, if we look at the following Monday is Martin Luther King Day. So, we're out of school that day, so we would like to have it on that next day on Tuesday. We'll find a day in there somewhere. Just tell me, we won't have it on that.
So, what, what?
Surely, when we're, you can't be off when we're.
Yeah, really, you can take it.
So, what, what are you looking at?
What we're looking at on policy, it was pretty strict on, if you looked at the marked out right there at the beginning, where it says, regular meetings shall be held on the second Monday of each month at seven P M. And that's pretty much toenailing the end of one day. Uh, what we would like to replace that with is regular meetings will be held in accordance with the schedule submitted to the county clerk prior to December fifteenth each year.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be on a Monday, the second Monday of each month, as long as the county clerk. It's all labeled with the county clerk and all that.
Right.
Can we change it for Tuesday?
Our next action topic, we're going to vote on the school board meeting calendar for next year. And that's what it's talking about being submitted to the county clerk.
Okay.
And we're going to establish what day, but really, uh, with the current, uh, policy, we're toenailing into it's got to be the second Monday of each month. And, uh, that would mean, for instance, this year, which I know would be okay with you guys, but, uh, the March board meeting would be, if you vote to that, it would be the Monday during spring break. So...
Can we change that perhaps?
Yeah, the only thing I want, that's a lot, I go to a lot of meetings, and they're, and they're always like, you know, the fourth Friday or the second, they're always scheduled. I just hope it doesn't get scheduled when I'm out of town, I mean, usually if I'm around it, it doesn't make any difference.
And, and we're going to, you'll have that, the schedule for all next twenty-three tonight after the, hope, hopefully after the next action.
We try real hard to make it happen.
We really don't want to, but if we have to, we'll do it.
Yeah, but I didn't see very cheap ones. But wait, wait, can we, can we not make it again?
Well, let's change it.
After all that, this action topic's real simple. Uh, it states right now, regular meetings shall be held on the second Monday of each month at seven P M. And what we would like to change that to in this policy, uh, policy B E is regular meetings will be held in accordance with the schedule submitted to the county clerk prior to December fifteenth each year.
Does that allow for deviation from that calendar?
The new policy does.
So I mean, like...
Gives you flexibility.
Okay, but say you can turn in a, can you turn in a schedule that, that we're, that's in this next one? Uh, so, you know, January's meeting's going to be on the fifth, is what this says, but can you change it to the sixth or the seventh or whatever you want?
You, we, we'll turn, the next action topic, we'll vote on this, and we'll turn this into the county clerk.
And then it's in stone.
It's in stone. Now, what you would do is you, let's say, we've done that a year and a half ago or something. And we had to cancel one, we'll have to cancel it, and then, uh, create a new one. It's just...
But it goes to, it, it, it follows the same guidelines. If you have to cancel it so many days, then you have to do, you know, turn it back into the county clerk, that is, so many days.
So it's not stone, that's still, that's still even...
I think, yes, you can, there's a procedure.
But we don't want to.
It's very, it's...
We don't, just because you can't make it.
It's set in sandstone, you can chisel it out. And if I remember right, it was, we weren't going to have a forum for, we're only going to have two people here. So we canceled that meeting, you, there's a process to do that. And then we established a new meeting time, like Thursday night.
Yeah. It's kind of the same process if we had a special meeting.
Similar.
You know, similar. How we have special meeting. Have to still turn it in two days, but forty-eight hours before and all that, you know? So the public knows.
Right.
Definitely want them to know that, so...
I get it.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting, the notification to see which one is meeting, so...
Motion made by, that gets seconded by Brett to make the revisions of the Board of Education meeting, you know, the case of procedure policy dash B E. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
And action topic B, consideration of school board meetings scheduled for twenty-twenty-three.
And, uh, Phil, we've almost talked about this already, but, uh, if you look at it, the three, kind of, that would not be on the second Monday would be that January meeting on the seventeenth, and that would be on the thir- third Tuesday. Uh, March the sixth, which that keeps us from having one on the spring break. And then April the eleventh, because the, the actual date on, I believe it's the tenth, is the day after Easter. We're out of school on that day, so we would have the, uh, the next Tuesday.
And then...
And then, yeah, and then the time, we talked about, uh, changing that to five-thirty, from seven to five-thirty. So all of our meetings, uh, next calendar year would be at five-thirty, so...
Is that okay?
Uh, yeah, I think so, I'm just looking at, I'm not doing half, half the year already, uh...
I'm going to have to put it on my calendar.
Uh, uh, there'll be some conflicts, but it won't, I don't mind anyway, so I'm doing it.
You can tell us you are, you can tell us you are.
Um, I'd make a motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-three school board meeting.
I'll second.
Can I have your...
Motion said, motion made by Brett, seconded by David, to, uh, move the, uh, to accept the school board meeting scheduled for the twenty-twenty-three school year. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic C, consideration of high school band trip to Atlanta, Georgia. In May of twenty-twenty-three, students serve to be transported by the school activity bus.
Okay, and this is, uh, every other year, the band takes a trip, it's to Atlanta, Georgia, they're requesting this year. Uh, the only difference is in the past, they used charter buses, generally two. And it's about, uh, twenty, it's been as much as, I think they said twenty-four thousand to charter those buses for that trip. And they're requesting to use our two, uh, activity buses and to try to save some of that money, uh, the band boosters. And, uh, kind of the deal we've talked about is for the school to purchase the fuel and the, uh, uh, the band to fund the drivers. Because it, we're checking into that, but it could be where they need two drivers for each bus. How will they pay those bus drivers? We'll pay them, and then they'll reimburse, aren't you? That's how we do it. And so, uh, because, oh, God, they, you can only drive so many hours a day, you got to have rest breaks, that kind of thing. So, um, uh, they may have to, uh, kind of recruit four drivers, two for each bus type thing. And, uh, uh, but they said, we can, we can do that probably less than what we control the buses. So I think it's prudent.
So I make a motion to approve the high school band trip to Atlanta, Georgia, to be transported by the school activity buses section.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David, to allow high school band to take the trip to Atlanta, Georgia, in May twenty-twenty-three. The students serve to be transported by school activity buses. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Action topic D, consideration of Ryan and Alana, Alana and Stamper. Super school band directors utilizing the school facilities to host the southeast marching band competition to be held on October seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, and that's just a mirror event to what they did this year. They did their first annual competition this year, was a success, well organized. Uh, they had thirteen bands throughout the day that participated. And they will work with the Little League football in order to kind of coordinate the use of that field during that time. And so, uh, they did a great job this last time, we request we'll, uh, do it again next.
Do they raise money?
Uh, I'm not sure about that. But that, I think it's, it's about raising money, and then a lot of times, just like it used to be in track, is to just have a good event in this part of the state for bands who have the track.
Well, that's good for the community, the square, there's been pretty much snow.
We're starting to recognize that in Stigler, that the more people you bring in, it's just beneficial to the tax base.
There'll be people everywhere, you don't find here. Buses can be everywhere, there's your parents there.
And in Stamper fashion, it's organized in the town, so...
Motion to approve the school band directors to use the school facilities to host the southeast marching band competition to be held on October seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David, to allow Ryan and Alana Stamper, super school band directors, to utilize the school facilities to host the southeast marching band competition on October the seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I couldn't talk for this.
Answers again, yes. Action topic E, consideration to reopen the Love Bottling Scholarship savings account for our national bank.
And this is one, as it says, we closed out, the Love Bottling, they ceased, uh, doing the scholarship money. We, uh, reorganized that, uh, contract with them. Part of reorganizing that last year, I believe it was, was for them to begin offering those scholarships back. So, uh, Ms., uh, Hamlin put that in another account, uh, for this, for the last year. And, but we feel like to keep it clean, we'd like to reopen that, that account to keep it close.
Make a motion to approve the reopening of the Love Bottling Scholarship savings account for our national bank. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, to approve to reopen the Love Bottling Scholarship savings account for our national bank. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Okay, it's time to move on to executive session. Executive session A, propose executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuit to twenty-five upon statute three oh seven B. One of the meeting act. Number one, discussion to employ a middle school cook, special ed instructor for the remainder of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Make a motion to convene the executive session. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, at eight twenty-two P M to convene an executive session. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Motion to have the executive session, for the return of the session. I'll second.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David, at eight fifty to return the board to open session. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Members present during executive session, executive session, we're David Higgins, Brett Form, Susie White, your intended David Form, who's also present. Discuss to employ a middle school cook, special education instructor for the remainder of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. No motion or vote was taken.
Make a motion to employ Marie Walker, middle school cook, special ed instructor for the remainder of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, to employ Marie Walker, middle school cook, special education instructor for the remainder of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Any new business?
No. Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, at eight fifty-one P M to return. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Next regular meeting, December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three.
Make a motion that Higgins...